Pursuit of the Governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, MGL C 38, paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's emergency order dated March 16th, 2020. The planning board will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the town's webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Act requiring, requirements, excuse me, keeping the public informed of our actions during this meeting. I would ask that all participants remotely attending this meeting, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting. At this time, we will do a roll call for board members. There's a client here. I'd like to protect my booth. Roll call.
Josh Santoro, President.
Okay. Karen?
Karen Puzo Langton, President.
All right. Scott?
Scott Ferkler, President.
Jason?
Jason Santos, President.
Okay. And I just want to read another quick, another quick thing here. The town will be, the town will be asking if those who want to speak during the specific agenda items, to use the raise your hand feature. And there's a couple of different things there, just in case there's anybody that doesn't, doesn't know how to do that. If you are using a tablet or smartphone and want to speak, touch the screen, depending on your device, either in the bottom or top right of the screen, there will be three dots next to participant, participant, excuse me. Press the three dots and then press raise hand. Two, if you are using a laptop or desktop computer and want to speak, click participant in the bottom of the screen. This will open a participant window to the right. In the bottom right-hand corner of the participant's window, click on raise your hand. Number three, if you are dialing by phone and you can, then you can press nine to indicate you want to speak. When is your turn to speak? You will be asked to unmute. For those on a computer, tablet, phone, will receive a message to unmute. If you are calling by phone, when you are announced by the select, excuse me, planning board, sorry, you will need to press six to unmute the phone. If you are unable to find the raise your hand feature, you can send a chat town hall system request to speak with, uh, planning board will be notified. Uh, okay. Uh, first we'll go through the approval of minutes from October 22nd and then the 29th. Uh, does anybody have any questions in regards to those? Um, I don't know, uh, you have, you don't, okay. Scott, do you have any, um, anything in regards to the minutes from either of those?
Uh, I do not. Thank you.
All right. Karen?
Um, on the October 22nd minutes, on page three, the fifth line down on the far right, we have misspelled a participant's name. Shall I spell it?
Which paragraph, please?
Um, I'm on page three. I'm in the second paragraph. I am on the fifth line down on the right.
Yep.
There is a gentleman's name there beginning with a K.
Yep.
It's K E E F E.
Oh, okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay. That's all I got.
Okay. Uh, Jason?
No, but kudos to Karen Langton for picking that up. Holy moly. Pretty good.
All right. Uh, if there are any...
Uh, no, I'm, I'm good and I can make a motion to approve and accept them.
Great. Terrific. You say you're gonna make a motion. Have you, have you just made a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to accept these minutes from October 22nd.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Minutes 29. That's right.
Scott Ferkler, second the motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
You, I, okay. Karen?
Aye.
All right. Uh, Jason?
Jason, aye.
Okay. And Scott?
Scott, aye.
Okay. All right. All right. Thank you very much. Let's take care of that. Uh, I guess the next, uh, item on the agenda, there are not any approvals, not required subdivisions this evening. Uh, next on the item, uh, on the agenda is Gulf Service Incorporated, 799 Washington Street. And this is a recommendation to the ZBA. Um, I don't know if it's, I'd like to, I don't know.
So, I mean, I could just review this really quickly. So, they're in front of the zoning board for a special permit to reinstate the use. Um, that is both the gas and the, um, service components. Uh, they're also proposing, um, a canopy, uh, within the front yard stepback and it's, um, set right now at, um, just under two feet. Um, they've had a bunch of sessions with the board, continued a bunch of times. Uh, this planner vision that you see is the latest one, although I hear that they presented something different to the EDC last, uh, I'm sorry, this week on Tuesday. Um, so there, I mean, there are essentially two separate issues. One is sort of the reinstatement of the use that was, I guess, technically not abandoned, but the building is empty for quite some time. Um, and then the canopy placement within the front yard stepback. So, the zoning board has the power to take it down to zero. Um, and I think what was submitted to you was sort of a rendering, um, some circulation sketches and the site plan. Um, so if you notice on the, uh, the rendering, the canopy is at an angle. Uh, what's been represented is that there's the turning, doesn't allow for no conflict on the Washington Street side, so they've eliminated the pumps, the pump on that side of the pump. So, there are three pumps on the inside of the site, if you would, and two on the outside of the site. Uh, what you see on the bottom right-hand side is a car that's coming in the entrance there. They characterize that as being 28 feet wide. They suggest that on the exit, it be limited to a right turn only out. They are proposing improvements to the sidewalk along Green Street. They are proposing a stop sign at that, um, exit on Washington Street, so the one for a right turn only out of the site. Uh, what you don't see on the rendering is that in the middle, um, of that sidewalk, between the driveway and Green Street, there is an electrical box, there is a street tree, and on Washington Street, there is a single parking spot. Um, and I believe they represented to the EDC that they wanted to approach the town about eliminating the parking spot. Um, so the board has asked, you know, for everybody to weigh in. So, under normal circumstances, you all would be the permitting authority. Um, but in this case, it's the ZBA. Um, they have not asked for peer review of the traffic. They did not get a traffic study. Um, the representations that were made, and I think we have a memo by NISH Engineering, is that a traffic study is not warranted. Um, they did look at the functionality of the light. Um, the station has not been opened, um, since the installation of the light. Um, so it's sort of a new issue. Um, the Select Board or Select Board members have requested more information on traffic and interaction with the signal. Um, if you can picture at the bottom left-hand corner of this, is the signal at green and exchange on Washington. So, what you see there is a sea of pavement, but what you see in reality is a sea of pavement markings. So, there's a turn lane there, um, and it's that super wide section of Washington that directs you sort of in almost a swerve on the eastbound side. Um, so the ZBA is just looking for input from everyone. Um, I don't know that they're expecting any revisions other than, you know, what they represented to the EDC, which was that they were gonna ask the Select Board to remove the parking space out front to improve the site since out of the site. So, I don't know if you have any thoughts, but they're asking.
My thought right there. All right. Uh, you know, I don't know if anybody wants to, uh, how about Scott? I don't know if you have any thoughts on this.
I guess, just what does removing the parking space do? Are they, are they talking for people taking left turns out of there or just more visibility?
Uh, deeper, people taking right turns out of there. They're proposing no left turns out.
Okay.
Of the driveway, that is. They're, you know, obviously they would direct all the left turns to the Green Street intersection.
I mean... So, I guess in that picture there, the, the white building, the facade of the white building that we see in the background, that's the supret? Is that, is that, just to get my bearings?
Yeah. The supret would be to the right and to the rear is 9 Green Street.
The bowling alley. Yeah. Um, I would probably say that I wouldn't, I'm not opposed to the idea of the right turn out of there, but I probably would just consider maybe just making it a one-way entrance. Just my thought.
No exit?
Well, everyone should exit on Green Street. They got a light there, you know what I mean? You got five pumps. I don't know. Seems like why I make it like a big problem, like turning right out of there. I mean, although granted, like, the amount of people that would be stacked up there at the light anyway would probably mitigate that. I don't know. It's my thought.
I mean, we've, we've already, uh, there's limited parking there in the town already.
Oh, I know. I'm not saying that, uh, I'm not saying get rid of the, I'm not saying get rid of the parking spot. That's, that's for, that's for larger heads to decide. I'm saying, uh, maybe not having it as an exit would be better just in general for the flow of everything, but that's just my thought.
Okay. Uh, Karen?
Yeah, hi. Um, I do, I have a host of questions. Um, for one, why is it not, why does it not come back to us?
Uh, because the zoning bylaw, um, the only section that, that grants the placement of the, um, of the canopy so close to the street is the, it is a direct reference to the zoning board's authority. So, it's essentially a variance in a special permit wrapping and the bylaw calls it out in the Village Center commercial as being a power of the zoning board.
All right. So, when is this, this, I've been here in this town for 20 years and I would say for at least half of my time in residence, this has not been operational. How does, how do we have permits that live on in perpetuity like this? So much...
It doesn't, it, it doesn't live on in perpetuity. That's why they're in front of the board, because...
Then how is it not back at us? That, that, I can't remember the last time they sold gasoline.
You could get free air there at one point.
And that's, um...
That's not gasoline. This is like an entirely different traffic flow situation here.
Yeah.
There's no question, Karen. It's determined that the zoning board is the permitting authority. Is that your question?
Well, my question is that there's a lot to unpack here, rather, it's not just a canopy that's being built. So, I guess I'm just pointing out that I think that we need to have conversations around what we're gonna do to shore up the town so that we're clear that things like this get to come back in front and have full assessments. Um, I am, am with Josh on this. I mean, to be coming in and out on Washington Street there with a parking space, I don't see how, how that's working. I also have an issue or a concern, I should say, is have fire and weighed in on how they're getting in there. This looks very, very tight. It was tight when there weren't three pumps and now they're going for three pumps. There weren't...
The key answer is that we would never go in there.
Say, say that again?
They would never go in there. They would service it from off-site. They, they would never be on that site. It's too small.
So, what does that do to the service time? What if something happens in one of the bays and they have to get in at something or there's a spill or something serious, somebody's down? Like, I mean, what does that do to being able to service, get people in and out of there? Why would there not be a peer review on traffic since the entire intersection has changed since the last time they were open?
I, I don't, I haven't memorized the memo from NISH, but you have it in your packet, so you have a memo dated October 23rd from NISH Engineering.
You have a question? You have a, you have a question? Yeah. All right. Um, Josh Santoro, planning board. Um, I wanted to ask maybe somebody who was older than me. Um, where did they service this place for like oil? Like, when you have to do like a refill, like they got the big tanker that comes in, obviously. Like at Mobil, they just line that thing up in the big parking lot, but this is obviously a smaller parking lot. Would that be done on Green Street or from Washington Street? Like, I don't know. It's just a tiny little lot. That's just another, like, that's even more like practical. That would be like an everyday use, like, not everyday use thing, obviously, but like a more common occurrence and maybe like a fire or something like that. Um, just, you know...
So, the cars are under the parking spots that are showing adjacent to Green Street.
So, then to Josh's point, the, the truck would have to be parked on Green Street to do that?
And then what? Back out of Green Street, I guess, or drive through the mobile station?
Well, they, they can park on the site. The question is which, yeah, which way do they exit?
Yeah. How are they gonna make that turn on the...
I have no idea. Obviously, they're either backing onto Green Street or backing onto Green Street.
Yeah. Or going through the mobile station. I don't know. I don't know. Get a, see what it do there.
Yeah. So, I don't know how that used to get done, um, but I'm open to hearing how that used to get done, obviously. Um, and then, um, I have another good question, but maybe I'll, maybe I'll remember it after a couple more french fries.
Okay. Karen, I didn't know if you...
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I, I would just like to see that the, you know, the zoning board while, you know, evaluating this, really pay close attention to what the traffic pattern is that they are going to approve, considering that the intersection has changed tremendously since a business has been in operation here before. I don't know why we would go from two pumps to three when the site is so tight anyway. Um...
I thought it was five.
Say that again?
I thought it was five pumps. And the two on the inside, three on the outside.
Yippee. On the double side of the pump, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Even worse. Um, so, you know, during our peak times, um, how are we gonna then, who's going to assess and address if, in fact, there's a lot of tie-ups then on Green Street, um, you know, holding back that neighborhood, stalling families from coming out of the playground? Who's going to then take a look at the traffic signalization to make sure that it's flowing properly? I just see this as having a lot of, uh, traffic impact. It's not necessarily the use, it's just that the, again, the intersection has changed tremendously since this business had been here. And if it had been operational the entire time through, they probably would have been part of this conversation.
Yep.
Isn't that the truth? All right. Um, are you, is there any other, anything else, Karen, or...
Who is this, who, who asked for this engineering company? Who requested them? NISH, who'd, who...
I'm sorry. Who did what?
Who requested this engineering company?
What do you mean? Who requested the engineering company?
Did the, did the Select Board request them? Did the ZBA? Because they're saying, you said, they said there's a move for a traffic study and I would disagree with that. I think there is a move.
Oh, this is from the applicant. This is all, this is all the applicant's packet that you're looking at.
Then I think the ZBA should ask for a, a traffic study.
Um, Jason?
Yeah, I would, I would agree that, um, you know, at least look at the timing of that intersection, just to see what if, you know, I like Josh's idea, having a entrance from Washington Street and an exit onto Green Street. If that is a way to keep that parking spot, Dave, I know you were, I think, just gonna say parking downtown's pretty tight. Um, you know, we've only got a limited number of spots downtown and it would be, uh, it would be nice to be able to keep an extra spot if we could. And, and, you know.
Sorry.
So, if, you know, if there's a way to keep, uh, that entrance one way in and the exit, obviously, one way out, uh, and to keep the parking spot, I think that would be, that would be helpful for some of those businesses that are downtown, for folks to just park there and maybe even the gas station. If there's a little, uh, convenience store that's part of it, that may be helpful to them as well. But, um, yeah, I would just suggest that they take a look at at least the timing and see, um, this thing, as we have said many times now, hasn't been run for years. So, with the new, uh, volume of vehicles going onto Green Street, that exit from Green Street into the intersection, what does that do? Should things be adjusted as far as the timing and the intersection? So, those are my thoughts.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I mean, potentially, I, I, I think our point in regards to somebody, we live in a world where sometimes people don't pay attention to signs and I can see a sign being out there that says right-hand turn only and somebody busting out of there and there's people walking or traffic in the middle of town there and something really bad possibly happened. Uh, so I just, a sign is great, but, uh, as we all know, most of the time, people don't pay attention to them, but there are a lot of times when people don't pay attention to signs and somebody said, "Well, I really need to take a left here." And unfortunately, there's like, and I'm thinking as we're talking, uh, in front of supret, there's cars, so you can't really see going out that way and you really can't see the other way because of what you mentioned, the, uh, electrical box and a couple other things there. So, that's really a sticky, I think for me, is that tough, tough situation with all that, everything there, it's such a blind spot. And I, I just think, again, I'm not saying always, but I think there are times where people don't obey the, you know, what it says and so, um, that's certainly my concern. And then the parking, I think it's, I remember we've had these discussions in the past where parking downtown, I know we had to take some spots away when the, uh, lights went in and so, um, limited parking there. So, um, that would be my concern. Did you, there was something you were gonna say? Okay. So, I'm not sure, unless there was another board member that had something they'd like to add. Um, I think everybody had a chance to weigh in on this. I don't know if there's, if that's...
That's fine.
Okay.
I can translate that into a memo?
I did have something to say, I'm sorry. I'd like the, uh, um, better description of the refilling process.
Refilling the 18 Miller? Okay. Now they, how they're gonna stack that in or, I mean, I, I...
Just every, just everything. I, Mobil's is pretty clear cut how they do it. I've seen it done. I just, this, I just never seen this one done before. Very curious.
Well, and then once you drive, when you drive a truck in Green Street, now you've either gotta go through Mobil or you gotta back it back to 116 somehow, so...
I'm assuming the truck would come in from Washington Street.
Yeah.
And I wanna know how it's gonna turn off of Green Street.
Yeah, I don't think he gets that through the, yeah.
I don't know. That's, that's all I want. So, I want that asked, please.
Okay.
See if that can be asked.
Okay. All right. Unless there's anybody else, we'll move on to the...
We're just gonna ask one more thing. Um, was there, or is there, I'm not seeing it in the packet, um, but with the pitch of the canopy the way it is and water runoff and snow runoff, where will that actually end up being?
Right into the street. They're not proposing any stormwater management.
What?
Might we want that?
Stormwater management, yeah.
It looks like that could be problematic, especially when rain turns to ice, right at the sidewalk there.
All right. Um, so we'll note that too. Um, I'm sorry, I'm sort of moving along.
That's fine.
I, I failed to mention at the beginning and I apologize for everybody on the call, uh, that 9:30 is curfew, so this call has to end at 9:30. Uh, regret to the governor, uh, so I just want people to know that at 9:30, we'll be ending this. So, we're gonna go through the 7:05 public hearing now and then we'll get to the 7:15. So, the 7:05 hearing now is, uh, Triangle Farms off Mill Street. And I apologize if I'm going quickly, I'm just trying to make sure there's enough time, uh, for these two things. So, um, I don't know, uh, Rob is here, I guess, uh, somewhere, or, or, oh, Joyce is here, I'm sorry. How are you? I guess you're, uh, we can't hear you, I think. Who is it? If you could unmute yourself or is that...
I'm, I am now unmuted. Good, good evening.
Thank you.
Joyce Hastings from GLM Engineering, representing, uh, Triangle Farm. And since the last hearing, we have, uh, discussed the entrance with the fire chief and met with the neighbor across the way, uh, because the road entrance is angled a bit to discuss a landscaping plan, which we developed for them. Um, and tonight, I believe we are reviewing the, uh, conditions of approval.
Okay. So, all right.
So, one of the waivers we're requesting is the reduction in the radius of the road at the entrance because the angle is, the angle of the road was changed slightly to avoid coming out directly in front of the neighbors. That will be reviewed with the fire chief, who, uh, we showed him that a fire truck could turn into that entrance, his large fire truck. And, uh, that was one of the things that we were reviewing prior to getting closing hearing.
Okay. All right. So, we wanna go through this? Um, I guess we'll start, see if there's any, uh, members that have any questions, Karen?
It's just noted that there was a comment letter from Maxie's on Bonnie Drive. Can someone summarize what it is that that letter said?
It was regarding historic use of the site and the potential for some sort of tire dump in the wetlands. It was also submitted to the...
But that was unfounded, right?
Well, it's not on this piece. There's another, uh, parcel that's off on the Bonnie Drive side. I don't know. I have not, I walked the wetlands and I didn't see a tire dump, but I would need to meet with them to see what they're speaking of. They also called here to talk about it. I would have to meet with them. But that's not necessarily on this parcel.
Anything else, Karen?
Um, the condition number two...
Yep.
So, but what about things that go unfinished or interrupted and then beginning again? So, once it starts, it can dangle there forever?
Well, you know that, you know that should be untrue.
It's just the word.
Oh, absolutely. So, you know, the first sentence is out of the statute about the completion. Um, operationally, your subdivision regulations, um, call for any extension... um, call for any extensions. You have a bonding review or surety review each time and for you to be able to control the extension period beyond that time.
And the way that's worded, that covers that then, right? I just wanna make sure.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Alright, uh, Jason?
I rest.
Um, yeah, just going off memory here, I, I believe Rob, uh, agreed to the vertical granite curb. Um, I believe we agreed to the waiver for the incline uh, for the, for the road heading to the houses. And what was pending, I think, was the fire chief discussion and then, as Joyce pointed out, the discussion with the neighbors across the street. Just curious how that went. Um, Joyce?
The meeting with the neighbors, well, I can, if you would like, show you the landscaping plan that we developed, um, as part of that discussion.
Sure.
If you would allow me to share my screen.
Yes, yes.
So, are you able to see this?
Yes.
Sketch here? So there's a, this is the entrance to the road. This is the driveway that's across the street. Um, there's a wall right here. They're gonna be doing a raised berm. See it in this area right here? So it's gonna be about a foot and a half of, uh, or almost three feet of material behind the wall and then plantings on top of it. So the, uh, so they're gonna put, uh, Norway spruce, green Norway spruce on top and then some shrubs, uh, in, in dispersed between it to kind of block the light.
Okay.
Okay. Alright. Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Uh, Scott?
Um, yeah, my question was gonna be about the curb and the grade, but it seems like it was just covered, so I'm all set.
Okay. Uh, Josh?
Hi.
Okay, you're fine? Okay, alright. Alright. Um, and I guess before we, uh, well, I see they're on a call. I don't know if they had any.
Can I just ask one more thing before we go to the residents?
Certainly.
So the, um, the drawing says CC berm, but as Jason indicated, I believe that we agreed to granite curbing, didn't we?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, um, once you approve the waivers, Karen, they will revise the plans that for endorsement.
Okay. Where were we with sidewalks?
There's no sidewalk in this roadway density requirement.
I thought complete streets required sidewalks, no?
Uh, there's no, there's no sidewalk. It would be a sidewalk to nowhere.
I, but I don't know if that's really the point, is it?
Well, this roadway width is not set up for a sidewalk. This is your rural residential lane. So right away is forty feet, the pavement width is eighteen.
Okay. Did you have anything else, Karen?
I, I'm, I'm, I'm researching it. I thought complete streets meant that we were supposed to be putting in sidewalks.
Well, it means accommodation for pedestrians, but the thought with a, a narrow roadway is that you only allow the narrow roadway where the density doesn't warrant, would not impact. So the traffic generation on a street with this density would not impact a pedestrian under normal circumstances.
So how are we accommodating then? All users? I just hate to make a decision for the future that we can't predict right now.
Well, this complies with your regulations. If you wanna propose a future regulation change or review, but this complies with that regulation.
Okay, as long as we're in compliance with what we agreed to with complete streets, then I'm fine with that.
Well, I think that, I, I don't wanna absolutely say that, but what, your regulations have not been reviewed for compliance with complete streets. If you wanna undertake a review reg, of the regulations for the future, that's great, but these regulations are from twenty fifteen and again, they don't call for sidewalks with a rural residential lane. They're compliant with the planning board's subdivision regulations.
Are you, um?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Karen.
Yep.
Um, and I think that that, unless there's any other questions, I, I thought I'd just, uh, open it up, uh, to the public in, in regards to Triangle Farms and see if there's anybody that had any thoughts. I know the neighbors across the street, I can see they're on the call. I don't know if they had anything or if there was anything, uh, or if there's anybody else that has any, okay. Hey, Amber. Um, if you, if you'd like to speak, uh, if there's something you'd like to, uh, any comments or suggestions or any in regards to this?
No, my comment is, um, we were very happy when Rob came by and, uh, talked to us about the pro- proposed solution and that our understanding is that this work will be completed by whomever does the development of that property as they're developing the property. So I guess my question is, um, how, how do, how do we, um, understand that it's done? Or how do you understand that it's done?
Yep, that was my question also. Do you wanna trigger in there?
I think so.
My suggestion is that prior to a building permit.
Yeah. I think so.
Unless you think that the road construction itself is going to be disruptive, um.
Uh, uh, I, I don't think so. No idea.
Okay. Well, it's been noted here, so, um.
Yeah, I mean, the general trigger, would be triggered with the either a building permit or an occupancy permit. So you're, you know, you're triggering the open space to the occupancy of the first unit. I think that it's fine to trigger that to the, to this building.
Building permit, okay, okay.
Okay, perfect. Thank.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I didn't know if you had any other questions or concerns or anything? Or?
Nope, that was it. Thank you.
Great, well, thank you very much for all your help with this. Uh, well, I didn't know if there's anybody else on this call again for, uh, Triangle Farms. I don't see anybody at this point. Okay. Okay. So at this point, um, again, board members, if anybody would like to make a motion to this effect, we, we have the whole, we have it here. We had this in our packet, um, so I don't know, unless there's anything else, uh, would somebody like to make a motion to this? To approve this? Yeah. Okay, Josh is making a motion to approve this.
Yes, contingent upon everything we've discussed.
Okay, okay. Do I have a second?
Jason's second.
Okay, Jason is second then. All in favor? I guess starting with Karen.
Aye.
Okay, uh, Jason?
Aye.
Uh, Scott?
Aye.
Alright, Josh?
Aye.
Alright, okay, alright, okay. Alright, great. Thank you very much, uh, we have to, I guess we have to sign.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you very, very, very much. Okay, so that's.
Should I say you're still, oh, gone. That's okay.
Alright.
Yeah.
Alright. Okay, next, uh, it is, uh, after seven fifteen. Oh, oh, uh, well, actually, I think we need to, do we need to, uh, close that public hearing? Do we need to? Okay, somebody could make a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay. Do I have a second? Close the public hearing for Triangle Farms?
Karen's second.
Okay, Karen's second then. All in favor, I guess, Karen?
Aye.
Okay, uh, Scott?
Aye.
Uh, Jason?
Aye.
Alright. Josh, aye, okay. Alright, so that has been closed. Okay. Uh, next, I think after, it's after seven fifteen, we will start the continued public hearing for CRG Integrated Real Estate Solutions, five 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 Hopping Brook. Um, and, uh, again, uh, we will be, uh, hearing a short presentation, uh, and then we'll have board members talk and then we'll have a chance to, uh, have public comment. I just wanna mention to everybody that by nine thirty, we have to have, be out of here and close, so this has to end by nine thirty. Uh, so I appreciate everybody and I apologize if I'm trying to, I wanna make sure that everybody has a chance. We've got, uh, um, we're under two hours, so, um. And we do, the, uh, the town attorney is here, so, um, but thank you for being here, so, um, I don't know if you had anything to say before we start that you wanted to.
No, let's, let's get started. Um, there's some thoughts I have that I discussed with Karen that we can get into after we hear a little bit from the applicant and from the board members on where we go, need to go still with peer review and analysis, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Uh, I believe Peter is here. I see Peter on the call.
Okay, I, I wasn't able to unmute, but I, I am now, so thank you. Uh, good evening, Peter Beam, is engineer and design consultants. Good to be ready to. Um, so I, I, I just wanna try to recap, uh, where I am and then go forward with the special permit that's before you this evening. Uh, so in the certificate of action, site plan review for five 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 Hopping Brook Road, the planning board voted the approval of the eight hundred thousand square foot warehouse site plan set with thirty-two specific conditions. Uh, this was following the review by two independent peer review agents retained by the board that vetted the site plans and supporting submittals that engineering design consultants had made. Uh, namely, CMG, uh, was the civil engineer that was retained and they evaluated the site grading and stormwater and related zoning compliance uh, tasks and then MDM evaluated the off and onsite traffic and pedestrian management systems. Uh, the board, uh, in the decision acknowledged that Mastod would require more detailed warrant analysis, including twelve hour turning movement counts and left versus right turn trip activity of Hopping Brook Road. The Mastod process is well underway. The Holliston Board of Selectment is in receipt of the Vanessa associate study and Mastod is expected to make their decision regarding Vanessa's findings in early December time period, so we're only a few weeks away. Uh, which would then open up the opportunity for discussions with the Board of Selectment regarding the signal details. And it's also important to note that the traffic study prepared by engineer and design consultants in October, excuse me, in December of twenty nineteen estimated about twelve percent more traffic than the thirteen hundred and ten trips per day that Vanessa reported for five 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 Hopping Brook Road. Uh, and these estimates are also significantly lower than the ninety-six hundred plus parking spaces and the thirty-six thousand vehicle trips per day that was originally projected for the three million square foot Hopping Brook project in nineteen eighty-two. So again, to keep it in perspective, we are way below what was originally projected for Hopping Brook Park. In the March site plan decision, the board found that the proposal met both the zoning bylaw and the planning board regulations, that the project would have a positive fiscal impact, that impacts to the environment were mitigated. Stormwater management was adequately addressed. The traffic flow was thoroughly considered with CRG committed to fully funding the study and the construction of a signalized intersection, which the board also stated that they were fully supportive of and that the board understood that the traffic signal design in details were at the sole discretion of Mastod. With this approval, the board attached thirty-one conditions to five 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 Hopping Brook Road. Conditions one through nine are general. They reference the specific plans that we prepared, the stormwater management systems that we designed, the lighting standards that we met. They, uh, stated that an ASB was going to be required before an occupancy permit would be granted. They also restricted the hours of construction activities and the provisions controlling the construction activities so as to minimize any nuisance to residents. The remaining twenty-two special, the remaining twenty-two conditions were special conditions. Uh, specifically items ten and eleven related to use and they were tied to the building inspector and his findings, which occurred subsequent to our submittal. So in March, we, we submitted our plans, you rendered your, your decision, the building inspector then gave us his findings, which then required that the CRG facility at eight hundred thousand square feet would be greater than fifteen thousand square feet, or item G three in the zoning bylaw. And with the intended purpose for storage, processing, packaging, assembling and transportation of merchandise and commodities, we would therefore be required to submit a special permit to the board, which is the application that's before you this evening. In that same finding by the building inspector, he also advised that we would be needing to make some submittal regarding toxic and hazardous substances, but that was not correct. There's no activities at this site. There will be no activities at this site that would include the discharge or disposal of hazardous, toxic or radioactive materials. Therefore, we no longer seek a special permit for that component at the facility. Uh, we also, uh, will not store outdoor materials that would exceed twenty-five percent of the eight hundred thousand square foot building, so therefore, we would be below two hundred thousand square feet of outdoor storage on the line. And again, that was another aspect of the special permit that we sought. We're withdrawing that as well. So the only thing that we're going to be considering, uh, going forward with is the use of the facility greater than fifteen thousand square feet uh, for the express purposes of storing, processing, packaging, assembling and transporting merchandise or commodities. Uh, conditions twelve through fifteen, uh, referenced that CRG had agreed to fund a three thousand dollar discretionary payment to the twelve affected abusers. Along with that, there were a number of tasks that were related to returning to the board, uh, in the event the building height changed. Um, at this point, we have received a variance from the zoning board of appeals, however, that has been appealed and it is, is in the courts, so if we prevail with that, we'll come back to the board to discuss it. If we don't prevail with that, we'll stick with the building that we, uh, have been approved by the planning board. Uh, water supply conditions sixteen and seventeen, CRG did agree to loop the water main. Uh, that work has not gone forward yet. Uh, we still are committed to that work. That will also improve the town's water distribution network and, uh, quality should improve as well. Uh, the traffic, uh, was the considerations for items eighteen through thirty-one. Uh, there was included, uh, completing Hopping Brook Road to Binder Course, not yet completed. Uh, that included completing the signalized intersection, where we're in design, uh, will be, uh, before the selectmen, hopefully, uh, in December with that. Uh, enforcing, uh, traffic management plan, uh, was also included. Um, upper Charles River Trail Crossing tasks. They included funding, uh, the existing crossings that lack signalized intersections. That was funded by CRG already. Uh, there's also a commitment, excuse me?
Partially funded.
Okay, excuse me, partially funded. I stand corrected. Um, electrical vehicle charging stations were required and bike racks were also required as part of the, uh, general traffic conditions. So in, uh, in summary, some of these conditions have been met. Uh, some are underway and still continuing. continuing. Uh, some have yet to be met, um, and, uh, are frankly just not initiated yet because the project stalled with litigation from, uh, several Medway residents. Uh, Engineering Design Consultants and CRG have now been at this process for, uh, well over a year. Uh, I will assure you that we are all committed to seeing this project through. Our resolve is firm. Uh, we believe that the site plan and the supporting documents were properly vetted by two independent engineering firms. Uh, we accept with full authority the planning board's thirty-one conditions. Um, we have no reason to not satisfy any of them. Uh, specifically, conditions ten and eleven are why I'm before you this evening for the special permit. I have qualified that two of them will no longer go forward with. We're strictly going to focus on, uh, exceeding fifteen-thousand-square-feet-of-floor area, uh, for the warehouse use that's intended, and, uh, we believe that the special permit is properly positioned for your consideration. Uh, yet, we remain available to provide the board with anything, and I mean, anything that they deem is necessary for them to make a full and partial decision, and I hope fully support this permit, uh, petition, excuse me, fully support this petition for a special permit. Uh, we do, uh, we do honor the board's, uh, excuse me, the board's, uh, building inspectors' uh, decision that stated that we needed to seek a special permit from you. Um, this was Chris Keeney that had made it. I know you have a new building inspector now. I actually was able to speak with him for the first time this morning. Um, so I'm not expecting him to make a ruling at this point. We're just going forward with the, with the decision that Chris Keeney had made, that we needed to file with you in accordance with, uh, three, excuse me, section G-three. Uh, general industrial uses including manufacturing, storage, processing, application, packaging, and assembly that occupy more than fifteen-thousand-square-feet, uh, square feet of floor area, um, that is the section that I am filing with you. I have filed with you, excuse me. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
First off, um, we still don't have any, uh, the operational details. Uh, any idea who the end user is?
We, we don't, this is a spec, we, as we've met with you in March, uh, this is a speculative warehouse facility. Um, the, uh, CRG had mentioned to you the tenants that they typically, uh, attract to their facilities. Uh, for the most part, they were Fortune five-hundred companies that, uh, the board was familiar with, and, um, we ex, fully expected to be one of those firms, but none of them have selected this site yet, frankly, because of the circumstances we find ourselves in. Um, I don't know of a firm that's going to want to make a decision to, to lease a facility when there's ongoing litigation that needs to be resolved. So as soon as we can get that behind us, the better off the project's going to be.
I also have a letter here from the, uh, select board, uh, regards to, uh, peer reviewing. Uh, and I think we'd like to have peer review on, uh, the noise and the traffic. I think that's important.
Well, on traffic, Mr. Chairman, you, you, you've already paid for a peer review done by MDM, um, that was to the two-hundred-eight-thousand dollars, and, and I've already stated to you that the traffic that's being projected by the, uh, Vaness Associates is twelve percent less than what we had presented to you when MDM did their review. So I, I don't understand why there'd be a requirement for another peer review.
Twelve percent less, okay.
Yes, sir, twelve percent less. Those are not my numbers. That's, that's the, which essentially a fourth party now, because we hired Vaness Associates to do this work.
And the, uh, noise peer review?
No, no, noise is a new issue. Um, as I stated to you at the public hearings when we were meeting regarding the, uh, site plan, uh, we're perfectly fine accepting the town's, uh, noise, uh, ordinance. Your local ordinance restricts the level of noise, and we'll meet that.
Okay, but that's, we're talking about doing a, a peer review, noise study. We're talking about something a little bit different, I think. Just a few firms that, uh, I think I have suggestions here from in regards to, uh... Sorry, I'm looking at my emails here. There's a couple of different firms here that I have listed that would be, uh, that we could use in regards to that. Is there anything?
I, I, again, I, I wasn't aware that you wanted to do this. I understand through the special permit process, you certainly could ask for that. Um, I don't think it's an unreasonable request, but as I said, we're not asking to exceed any, uh, ordinance that you currently have in place, uh, that governs your community. So any other business that's already located in Holliston, uh, is governed by that ordinance, and we're accepting those conditions to meet that ours. Not asking for anything special.
All right, and then back to this, uh, I have a letter right here from the board, board, uh, select board in regards to, uh, peer review for the traffic study at the cost of the developer.
But again, Mr. Chairman, we already did, we already did that for this project.
Well, I thought... Can I help you out, Dave?
Sure.
I thought that, I, I, Peter, hi, how are you?
Hi, good evening, Karen.
Um, we did have traffic information at, specifically at the intersection, but I don't believe that we've had a further-reaching look at traffic. We haven't considered the impact, um, and really studied it on how it would be on South Street, how it would actually be going into downtown. You yourself just admitted that you don't have an end user, so to be able to say that traffic will only go in one direction, you can't say if you don't have an end user. So, we, we would like to have a little more information about how the impact would be if, in fact, the end user was going in all directions. I think that we need a more far-reaching study done. Um, as far as the noise, I, I, I actually, um, would like to remind you that we did talk about that a lot, um, as far as, uh, trucks beeping and backing up and unloading and all the bays being, um, in the back of the building, which would be closest to the Medway residents. We have talked about noise just a number of times, so I, I do think it's somewhat, um, maybe forgetful, um, to think that we hadn't been talking about noise before, because we have. We, we, we've brought this up as a board a number of times. We, we've been together, um, for more months than I can actually count, and, and we have brought up a lot of these things. Um, so I just wanted to support Dave on those things because he's not crazy. I remember that stuff being discussed.
I, I'm, I'm not suggesting he's crazy, that's for sure. I'm, I'm just saying that, um, we did, we did discuss them, and I did, and I remember making the same commitment to you at that session, uh, that we were bound by your local requirements on noise levels, and we would not exceed them. Uh, CRG also made that commitment. Um, the further commitment CRG made regarding traffic was that all of their truck traffic would be heading west on Route sixteen. None of that was going to head east into the...
But if you don't know who the end user is, I don't know how you can say that.
No, we, we've, we've, we're mandating that in our lease. I mean, that's part of the commitment that CRG has made to you as a community, and they, they're committed to that in their lease arrangements with their tenant.
I thought it was not CRG.
And I know that there's been speculation that we might be trying to, uh, solicit, uh, Amazon as a tenant. We've already stated that publicly, that Amazon is not the tenant for this facility. Uh, there is not going to be an end user that goes in this building that needs to go in the easterly direction, uh, which is what I think everyone anticipates that Amazon would do, and, and so that's the other thing that we had stated, um, probably not in a public session, uh, enough, uh, but certainly privately, it's been stated a number of times that Amazon is not the tenant of this site. Uh, so I'll state it again officially, that it, that they are not, and the tenants that they are looking at are Fortune five-hundred companies that need bulk storage like this facility will provide, and their traffic movements are going to come from north-south on, uh, Route four-ninety-five, either coming from the Mass Pike from east or west, and, um, for the most part, in north-south on four-ninety-five to Route sixteen via Route eighty-five and Rio, Rio one-oh-nine. And I know there was concern about South Street. I'll, I'll also say that emphatically, that, that this project also committed that no traffic on South Street from our project. Um, we further had stated that we would have no problem helping the town find ways to mitigate that traffic further by li, u, using speed tables or something at the crossing, for example, uh, where the trail crosses, because that intersection is, I think, poorly laid out from my perspective. Uh, but we didn't design it, and we were involved in it. We just said we would help. So we're committed to, to still helping.
I think there were a couple of concerns, too, further up the road, uh, on sixteen. There were a couple of side streets there that were concerned. I know I've been in a couple of meetings where those have brought up a couple of smaller side streets, and again, I apologize, I don't know the streets. Further up towards the Milford side, um, and I think, uh, too, I think on the Milford side, I, I gotta say, I can't comment on Milford, but, um, you're gonna have all that traffic going down to either take a right on Fortuna Boulevard or a left there, where all the stop and chop and all that. I can't tell you, but sometimes I've been stuck on all that traffic, but, uh, it's fairly congested there, but that's not our town, so, um, just starting right now. But in terms of the study we're concerned about, uh, certainly the noise and the traffic in regards to those side streets further up on sixteen, and again, I apologize, I don't know the name of the street, um, but, uh, it's just in regards, I think, to all this. Uh, that's why we would like to do peer review.
Okay.
And I think that what, what, I, I don't know, I'd just like to, for everyone, right, all of, um, the residents that are even on, you know, Amazon isn't the only, right, e-commerce, uh, facility that, you know, we should be concerned about, right? We also have, uh, you know, if you, if you were in Indiana, they would be big ones, right, that are run by LFI, and they are, um, big warehouse stations that, companies that can't afford to have their own warehousing rent space in. So, Peter, I could easily see it be, being something like this, right? Where, where, like, Patagonia needs to have stuff, and Philson needs to have stuff, and these are smaller companies that still have far reach. Um, so, again, I, I would think I feel so incredibly, um, competent and confident that we can't determine where trucks are going if we don't know who the end user is. And I know that you're not prepared to tell us that because you don't know right now, but I do think it is a pink elephant in the room that we have to feel a little more confident with.
Okay, all right, well, well, I, I'm... Again, I do feel as though we've talked, we've crossed this bridge, but I am willing to go back on the other side with you and, 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 and do that. So, uh, I know CRG is committed to this site, as am I, and we're gonna find a way to get it done. So, uh, yes, we will, uh, support. I, I would like to have some definition of what the noise study is gonna entail, and I would like to have some definition of what the traffic, uh, analysis will be, because I just don't want to go over things that have already been done. Um, there's enough paperwork that's already been, uh, completed to evaluate, um, the five-five-five site. That's all I would say. But I'm still willing to commit to doing it.
Okay, so you're not saying that you would hope us to just make a decision based on what we've got?
I didn't catch the end of it.
Are you, are you asking us to make a decision on what we already know?
On what we already... No, I'm telling you that I'm, I'm willing to support going forward with those, uh, studies. I just would like to have them defined, so that we're not rehashing things that we've already done. That's what I'm stating.
Here, I have a question. What would be the proposed hours of operation for this facility?
It's twenty-four-seven.
Well, that's proposed. That's not decided on, right, Peter?
Okay, that's what we had, that's what we presented, uh, in March with our site plan review.
That, that hasn't been decided on yet.
Okay.
But, uh, Ted Council, is there anything you'd like to...
Yeah, I just wanna, um, I, I think that the discussion is a good one. So, in terms of the, uh, the streets you're gonna use and not going to use, uh, it appears that you're willing to accept a binding recorded restriction against use of those streets, correct?
Uh, yes, Counselor, yes.
So, the, I mean, that's good. That helps frame the traffic study. As to the traffic study itself, I, I saw a peer review done back, I think, in January or February, but I don't think there, first of all, the board, I don't think has the Vaness, um, traffic study submitted to it, that I think came to the select board. So I, I think at, at the very least, MDM would have to peer review what Vaness has done, um, and bring all that forward. More than that, I, I think we'd have to take a look as to if we don't know who the end user is, but we do know some streets that are going to be used. I think the parameters of the traffic study are going to have to consider a pretty high use, that which involves a lot of truck traffic, twenty-four-seven for a comparable e-commerce facility or whatever else is the highest and most intense use that, that is predictable. So I don't know if that requires you to go back to Vaness and have them tweak that a little bit, or if we can go, or if we would feed that into our peer review, um, to be done by MDM and have them consider that, and then Vaness would have to adjust accordingly. My experience with these e-commerce facilities, though, sometimes it, it's not all just volumetric, and I think that's where the noise study comes in. I think we can study level of service, especially in the middle of the night. I don't think it's, that you're always gonna find a decrease in the level of service below, um, levels, but we will get an accurate report from your traffic person then to our traffic person as to what those truck movements might be in the middle of the night, and that will inform the board as to the impacts to the neighborhood, uh, and to the area, and to the, along those truck routes, because traffic in the, in the common volumetric sense, um, has a certain concern for the board, but traffic that might serve more of a nuisance in the middle of the night has, takes on a whole other concern that a board might have with an industrial use such as this. So it's important. I'm glad to hear that you've kind of narrowed your focus on the specific roads. Obviously, the chair has, has already laid out some other potential intersections that have to be looked at, and then that has to all be peer reviewed by MDM. But then that brings up the noise question. So again, the noise question isn't so much, are you literally requiring or complying with, um, ten dB above ambient, or, or whatever other standard the town has. It might be whether or not, uh, idling trucks or trucks arriving at two AM may have an impact to nearby, um, uh, residents, either directly, uh, along the, the site or along the route to the site, that the board may wish to consider as to whether or not the, the use is compatible with the grant, for the grant of a special permit. So those, those issues I think are really important to know. I think it, I think it would help you, and I've been, again, been through this exact same thing where an applicant did not want to disclose who the end tenant was, and that's fine. You may not have an end tenant, yes, but the more you can focus and tell us the nature of that, the better off you may be, because otherwise, the board can only assume that the most intense use is going to happen there, given what we know about these large warehouse facilities, and that may not be as intense as you may ultimately want to propose, but we're left with no choice but to evaluate it along those lines. And that's fine, we'll do that, but it may require some sharpening of pencils by both your traffic person and the noise people. As to noise, I don't think, I think you should do a study on noise based upon, uh, the most intense use that's conceivable, and then we would peer review it. I don't think you should pay twice. So peer review obviously would be cheaper. So I think that's up to you to develop a noise study on what your proposed range of uses are, and then we would, um, then you would fund our peer review going forward. So, you know, that would be, uh, you know, over the next period of months, uh, obviously, as, as we roll this hearing out. So those are my thoughts on those few issues that have been raised, the use, the noise, the traffic to date. And traffic has got a lot more elements to it than just mere level of service A at a specific intersection with these industrial uses, in my, in my experience and view.
So, so, so just to take, take a couple of those points. Um, on the noise, I think it makes perfect sense. We should do a noise study that, that you would hear, and I don't disagree. Uh, on the traffic, I, I, we're just gonna state, again... the traffic, I, I, we're just gonna state, again, for the record, we are not going to solicit an e-commerce company for this facility. The fact that I said Amazon, I wasn't trying to be cute and say it's gonna be some other company that's just got other letters in its name. We specifically stated in our traffic study that has been submitted to Mass DOT at the board's, excuse me, at the board's decision, your decision stated that I'm to do this.
What's your definition of e-commerce, though? I mean, it's not a definition under the zoning bylaw here. So I just want to make sure for your benefit that we, you, you, you haven't said what the use is. You're trying to say what it might not be, but it's not really susceptible to an easy definition. So, or the more you can narrow that, I mean, you're again, saying it's gonna be a twenty-four seven use, which means whether it's either direct e-commerce or second tier for companies that rely upon supplying things for e-commerce, can be two things. And I don't want to mince words here, and I don't want to have us accuse you of hiding the ball. The more you can tell us about this use, the more we can limit the, potentially limit the scope of the study and the peer review. The less you tell us, the more we have to assume that it's gonna be the most intense possible use, which is twenty-four seven of a lot of trucks. I mean, you've already said it's twenty-four seven, so someone's stocking something. Twenty-four seven.
No, the, the, the trucks can arrive at off times. Yes, that's right. But the, the point that we've made, and again, the study is relying on IT data, which is the standard for this traffic analysis. And it is the category that we have focused on. And it is not an e-commerce type, Amazon type business unit.
Well, then you're gonna tell us what the use is.
Well, excuse me, Counselor, I didn't interrupt. If I could have, all right, then I'm not, I, I, we can't do this as a debate. I'm just trying to state for the fact that we are not going to have traffic numbers that you're projecting. We've already submitted that data to Mass DOT, which they are the ones who are going to vet this. And they are the ones that are gonna design the signalized intersection with us.
But they're not granting a special permit. This board is. So this board minds down with more detail. So Mass DOT is gonna evaluate what you gave them, because they don't give a local permit.
Agreed.
And if you, if the use changes from what you give to Mass DOT, then you're gonna have to do an amendment to your MEPA or whatever else. But this is the, this is your last stop here. So we want to get it right, right now. So just as e-commerce isn't susceptible to just one definition, the other use codes that you're talking about are not susceptible. So the better you help yourself in terms of narrowing the use, the better it is for you. Otherwise, you're, we're gonna have to assume a, as, a use as intense as the most intense possible use there for a kind of similar warehouse facility of a similar size, which is roughly the equivalent of e-commerce, even if it's not Amazon. So the more you can help us, the better.
Okay. Okay. Well, we're in agreement that we, we, we will fund peer review. But I, again, I, I think it should be based upon what we are submitting, not what someone's speculating that we're going to be. We are defining our use here.
Well, I don't think you've defined anything, though. So that's, that's the problem.
That's what I'm saying to you, is that we identified the IT code in our application. We have told you what our traffic volumes are going to be. That business unit is defined.
What business unit is that?
IT one fifty. It's in, it's in the report.
Well, what, what, what is that use? We don't have that traffic study.
Again, the, the, the planning board's decision stated that we were to submit this to Mass DOT, sir. And I have followed that direction to a T.
Right. But we're now having to grant a special permit. Well, what is that use code?
It wouldn't. This isn't what I do as a primary job function. So I'll have to rely upon Van Ness, who, that is their primary. That's why we brought them in.
You don't have to tell us tonight either. I'm just saying, you, you might be hurting yourself if you're limiting your use to something, because there's gonna be restrictions in the grant of any special permit that are gonna be below what your use threshold is, potentially. So I'm, I'm not saying it to be cute. I'm just saying you're not helping us define it more clearly. So we can only assume that it'll be, we have to err on the side that it's gonna be more intense. So the, the more you can define and what the use is going to be, we can restrict the permit to that use. And if you wanted to exceed that use, you would come back.
That's my point, is that we, we have defined that. And we were very-
Not, not to us.
Yes, sir. Okay. I understand. In, in the report, we are identifying IT use code one fifty warehousing for both the eight hundred thousand square foot building at five-five-five and the proposed building that would be located at six hundred Hoppingbrook Road as well.
That's probably not gonna be specific enough, because that's just too broad.
Okay. I will do what I can, sir. Like I said, we, we very much want to have a tenant in this building. We very much want to build this building.
So, Peter, understood that trucks could be arriving twenty-four seven, but what would be the proposed, like, would the, would the building be operating three shifts? What, what would be the proposed hours there?
I would anticipate that there would be a three-shift business here, yes.
Scott, ask me a question, by the way. Did you have any other questions, Scott?
Um, not right now, no.
Uh, Jason?
I, I have no questions. I'm taking it all in. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Uh, here, here, no questions. Okay. All right. See you, Alex. Okay. Uh, so I checked back with Karen if there's anything else at this point, or you're just listening, I guess.
Yeah, I like everybody else right now. I'm just taking notes.
Yep. Okay, great. All right. And at this point, I don't know if there's-
No, I mean, again, we're, we're just kinda getting started, so.
Okay. So I guess at this point, I will open it up to the public. I see we have a couple of questions. I just want to make sure that every, your questions, if there's anything you had or anything.
No, I didn't, I didn't know if you want to discuss with Peter in terms of, of what he thinks in terms of timeframe for spitting out and doing an actual noise study?
What, did you, Peter?
I, I'm aware of firms that do do this. Again, you know, my expertise is civil. So I would bring on a, a professional that is responsible for doing that analysis, and we would provide it to the board. I probably need, and I haven't got anyone yet, so I, I probably need a few weeks to put that study together, then distribute it to you. I know you want things a week in advance at the next meeting. I'm not sure what date you're looking to potentially put this out to, but I, I would say that a month would be a reasonable timeline for me to be able to get it done and get it back to you in time for review.
I have a list of several here that we want to talk about. No, okay.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think those are, those are your peer reviews. You probably don't want to tell me who any of them are, because I, I might want to select one of them. How about if we let me pick one first?
Okay.
I don't know how many are out there that let, do this, but I'm, I'm sure in the Boston area, there's gotta be at least a half a dozen. So we might be looking at the same ones.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, at that point, at this point, I guess, I see, the first person I see here is Andrew. I've had.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yeah, thank you.
Hi, my name's Andy Rodenheiser. I'm a Medway resident. I'm calling to speak as a personal, well, as a person, not as a representative of any board or the town of Medway, or of my business. I'm just speaking personally. I, I think it's important that I give that distinction.
Is your street address? I'm sorry. Is it, is your street address?
My street address is Seven Dover Lane in Medway.
Great. Thank you very much.
Um, and, and the, the reason I'm speaking personally is I want to avoid the appearance of any type of impropriety or, or conflict, as my business is in the park. And I also serve on the planning board in Medway. I spoke with Karen a couple of times about this. I didn't realize there was a special permit that still hadn't been issued. And I, I have, you know, some pretty significant reservations about this. I, I have, you know, over the years, listened to the trucks coming up and down Hoppingbrook and where I, I butt land that is adjacent to the park. I can see the water tower through the woods. And I can hear the trucks, you know, how, you know, wagging as they try to drive up the hill. I understand that this is not gonna be the loop that it was originally intended to be. It was represented to me that it was prohibitive because of conservation. I, I don't know if that's true or not. But I, I would like to have seen that have connected, because it would be a shorter route to there without all the noise of the truck lagging as it goes up the hill and all of the noise associated with the jake braking that happens as they go down the hill. Bay State Engineering has been crushing up in the park for, I don't know, a year or two now. And I, I listen to those dump trucks, you know, all the time. And, and the tractor trailers that come through there now make significant noise. I took pictures today of the truck traffic that's in there now. And they, they park in front of my building on either side of the street. And this facility hasn't even been built yet. And, you know, they park on the opposite side of the street, going the wrong way. No one's regulating it. And to think that, that because you are going to put a special restriction as, as a limitation on a special permit, as some kind of mitigation for this, is ludicrous, because you can't expect the police department to, like, pull over tractor trailers and ask where they're coming from. And I mean, it's, it's insane to think that you're gonna enforce something like that. Every type of trucker that comes in is, is gonna, you know, come in the way that they need to and go with the next way that they need to, which might be take a right out of the, the street. And, you know, to, to think anything different i- is, I think, a little silly. Traffic is a regional issue. And with a facility of this size, the regionality of this should be considered. I, I spoke with Larry in Milford, the, the planner there. And he believes that we should have a, like, something like the Cape Cod Commission to work on these types of facilities that are this large, because the impacts of this will be felt several towns away as, you know, the, the volume of traffic, whether it's just people that work there. And as the shifts change, I, I get you put a traffic light in, but you're gonna flood the intersections in several towns for, you know, an hour or two at each chain shift. And I, I think it's something to be considered. The noise standards for a facility of this size with the impacts of, of this truck traffic and the, and the loading and unloading as they go over the dock adjusters and levellers, it makes a significant amount of noise as it reverberates through the sides of the trucks. You know, some kind of special permit like this certainly could require mitigation. But I'm not sure how you're gonna do it and still have it be the type of facility that it is. I don't think when, when this was built, or, or, or the park started to be built, that it was contemplated for this intensity of use. And, you know, it was, I think, an office campus. If you look at the existing way the place is built out, it, it's, it, it wasn't intended to be this intense. And, you know, I, I, I think you need to be very careful about what you do here. And, and I would urge you to either put significant restrictions on this. And I get the, the, you know, the, the fascination with getting more tax dollars is something every town, you know, focuses on. But I, I think you will be doing a significant disservice to the greater good of the community by not having significant restrictions and, and downsizing this thing significantly. And I'll, I'll continue to listen. And I'll send, I sent the pictures from today to Karen on her email.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you for your input. Next, we have Gary.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. A couple of things. First, I'll go with the, the trucking side.
Uh, street address, please.
Oh, fourteen Old Sully Lane in the budding neighborhood to-
Thank you very much.
My wife Mary is with me as well. You know, the, 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 the traffic, the noise, basically, one of the concerns I had was, you know, all the trucks coming into the neighborhood and the noise levels. And I think this is the second meeting that I participated in where I heard Mr. Bemis basically say the same thing over again, which is the lease owner can control which way the trucks come in and out of the property. And the last time, I think I made a comment as well, that it's just a false statement. First of all, he doesn't even know who's gonna be leasing the property. Unless it was on Amazon, for example. So Amazon, maybe, you know, the drivers all work for Amazon. He's saying it's not Amazon. It's fine. Great. It's not Amazon. But whether it be Home Depot, Lowe's, Target, any of these large warehouse-based distribution centers, they are serviced by independent drivers. My company supplies, sends trucks, thousands of trucks to distribution centers around the country. They're all independent truckers on our part. We just tell them where to go. They go there the best way they want to. They leave whatever way they want to. We have no control over. When they drop off product at a distribution center like this, there's no way anybody's gonna tell them which way to turn left or turn right. So I don't know why Mr. Bemis keeps saying this fairy tale of that somehow the owner, who you can't even tell who they are, is gonna have control over which direction the trucks come and go. And anybody driving on four ninety-five these days, you know, you have those times when just traffic is stopped. And I can tell you that these trucks, if they need to get to Natick and four ninety-five is backed up, they're gonna go, be going through downtown Hollister. There's just no way around, you know, controlling where these trucks are gonna go. Most distribution centers are, are, are serviced by independent drivers. They're not company-owned trucks. Company, you know, the drivers do not work for the, for the distribution center, or whoever's leasing the distribution center. So I, I'd like to make sure that's clear, that I just don't see, you know, that, like, why this is being brought up over and over, that somehow that unknown lease owner is gonna control the trucking. They just can't. The other point I wanted to make was, you know, there's Triangle Farms Development, you know, was brought up earlier. And, you know, there's just a, a couple of houses, like six houses in that development. And there's a lot of concern about the neighbors across the street. And I was very appreciative of the way the, the board was handling the light and making sure that they make adjustments for the neighbors. And I guess I was just asking for that for the, for the neighbors in Medway and then any other budding neighbors. You know, how can we make it so the trucklights aren't showing into the neighborhood? How can we make it so the sound isn't, you know, vibrating throughout the neighborhood? I was thinking a berm, like a twenty-foot tall berm with a noise reduction wall on top of it, you know, if this site's gonna go forward, it's the only way you can stand it to, of mitigating some of the noise. You know, the Massachusetts noise ordinances, it can't be ten decibels louder than the existing baseline. And a typical neighborhood, let's just say, is forty-five decibels. And the typical truck backup beeping sound is a hundred decibels. So, you know, if your baseline's forty-five and the truck is a hundred, and it's only a hundred fifty feet away from the neighborhood, I don't see how we won't be hearing that twenty-four seven. Right now, when the little Medway mail truck goes to his deliveries, you can hear him, if you're standing outside your front lawn, you can hear him going, or even in your house, you can hear this little truck going around the entire neighborhood, you know, thousands of feet away from you. So the, the noise is my other big issue with this. I just don't see how this is gonna work. And the final statement I'll make is, you know, since- you know, since my company does a lot of business with large distribution centers, they're never located within a town that you have to go through multiple towns to get to. You know, you look at four ninety-five, it's a perfect example. You know, this would be the ideal location, abutting four ninety-five, you come off the exit ramp, you go right into the distribution center. Many businesses, you know, with Whole Food or Home Depot, Target, you know, they're all located right abutting a major highway. And the businesses that I deal with, that we send to distribution centers, those are the best locations. You'll get the fewest complaints because there's, there's no neighborhoods abutting next to them. They're coming right off the highway. There's already highway noise anyway. So that's the ideal location. To put this in Holliston and having these trucks going through, through Medway, through, through Bellingham, when the traffic's backed up, they're going to go through Bellingham and through Medway or through Milford, you know, through Holliston. And then if they want to get to Framingham and Natick or towards Boston, they're going to go through downtown Holliston. So, you know, the current neighbors, the current businesses in Hopping Brook have been good neighbors. You know, we hear nothing about them. They've been very good neighbors. This type of project belongs somewhere else. I am interested in hearing what the Holliston bylaws are regarding noise to get a better understanding. How do you measure it? Do you do a base measurement first? And how often are they allowed to exceed the base? So I do have that question that that could be answered. I'm not sure if it can. But thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much, Gary, for speaking. Next, we have Matthew.
Yes, thank you very much. Matthew Minch for Old Surrey Lane in Medway. I'll try to not reiterate what's already been mentioned, but certainly corroborate what the folks have said so far. So I'll try to add on to that instead of repeating things. So traffic has been a big discussion. I have yet to see a credible traffic report that is within the last decade. In fact, one of the recent ones that I saw, saw from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation argued that there'd be up to seven thousand five hundred, seven thousand five hundred truck trips per day with this facility. So I think there's a massive, we're not even in the same ballpark. What this operation is suggesting will be traffic is, is completely out of the realm of what the Massachusetts Department of Transportation suggesting. Now, that comes with a lot of different things. One is particulates in the air, pollution in the air. What's going to happen with runoff from that facility? How are they going to manage that? I've yet to see any of those plans at all. And you know what? I'm gonna, I'll try to be short because there's a couple of the people on this call I think will be more credible than me. Who's going to police this stuff? So if they're taking turns out of the park that, that they shouldn't be, what are we going to do? Call the police every minute? What if they exceed the noise ordinance limits? Are we going to call the police every five minutes? Who's going to measure it? So, I mean, I understand that there's regulations and rules and stuff. None of that stuff really matters unless there's somebody that's going to police it. So I've got a lot of other things to say, but in the interest of other people talking, I will rest with that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Matthew. Next is Timothy.
Hi, it's Janet Sheen, five Old Surrey Lane. I just wanted to thank members of the board for hearing us once again. And I sent something to Karen Sherman. I'm not sure if she shared with you, but I have the Trip Generation Manual, tenth edition, land use codes. And as I understand, they're applying for a one fifty, which is warehouse. And that it's definitely not one five five, which is a high cube fulfillment center warehouse. But there are two other codes that I believe this actually falls under. I think the one five zero is sort of a smaller type kind of what I'll call a regular warehouse. CRG builds high cube warehouses. This would be the only one in the Northeast. If you go to their website, they call it in the pipeline. There's a little dot right in our area. And also, when you look at their examples, their aerial views of these huge massive warehouses, they're not anywhere near neighborhoods. But the codes I have in front of me are one five four, high cube, transload and short-term storage warehouse. And one five six, high cube parcel hub warehouse. So those are two different codes that I'm assuming that when you have codes, different numbers, there are for reasons, there are, you know, there are different bylaws that apply, that there is a whole different traffic pattern and number. So this is under the Trip Generation Manual. So I don't believe it's a one five zero. I, I, it looks to me like it's because it's CRG and it's a high cube warehouse that it's either one five four or one five six code. And just curious, Mr. Bemis, if you could speak to that.
So, Mr. Chairman, I was just taking notes, figuring that we just got all these out rather than try to discuss each one of the abutting person's comments. As far as the use category, this is the specific category that is being specified for the tenants that CRG is soliciting. They are not the type that Sheen has just raised. That much I can just state for this point.
May I ask, so CRG, aren't they in the business of building high cube warehouses? Isn't that all they do?
Again, I'll state for the fact is that they have told us what use category to use at this facility. And they're not trying to be cute. We are trying to get an accurate projection of the traffic that is going to occur at this site. It is not the type that you folks are trying to say we are. That's, that's my point. We are not going to be in the business of transporting materials the way you're describing it. So we are not in those use categories.
Just the size alone, if, if you are going to go forward with your master plan, which is the eight hundred thousand, the six hundred thousand and the ninety-five thousand, hundred thousand, I mean, not to mention the outdoor storage. The master plan is one point five million square feet of product that's going to be moved in and out twenty-four seven. And I think that the, the traffic study will, should definitely reflect that. One point five million square feet of product. There is nothing like that in our area, nothing like that in the Northeast, to my knowledge. And, and just to go back to the traffic, I was doing errands in Milford. It is already a disaster in that area. And a tractor trailer, the long haul semi eighteen-wheelers to turn on Fortune Boulevard onto Route sixteen. So even if, you know, you're saying, oh, they're all going to go left, even if, you know, they all do, it's, it's not going to be pretty. They require two lanes to make that turn. It's a ninety-degree angle intersection. They cannot make those turns without taking up two lanes. And I can't imagine a big semi tractor trailer truck at one a minute taking turns from each direction. It's, it's already congested. It's, it's already just a super busy. I just, I can't imagine what it will do to Milford. And it just makes, you know, I know for me, it's, I don't even want to do errands anymore up in that area. It's ridiculous. And I just can't imagine what this will do to them, what it will do to the town of Holliston. And again, thank you to Gary for, again, reiterating the noise. We can now, I can hear four ninety-five because the trees have been cleared. So if I'm hearing traffic on four ninety-five come through that land, I mean, I'm, I'm going to hear a hundred and seventy trucks backing up twenty-four seven and, and right out my back door. There's just no way we will not hear that. And it's not something to look forward to, to say the least. And I guess that's all I have to say. Again, it's the, I, I don't think it's an IT code one five oh. And I wish, I hope the board can look into that because CRG is high cube and there are different codes for high cube. And I hope the traffic study addresses the master plan of one point five million square feet of product being moved back and forth twenty-four seven. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Janet. Next, I see Charlie.
Thank you very much. I'm Charlie Myers, nine Curtis Lane, Medway, Massachusetts. I want to thank the planning board for their due diligence in running through this process. With over two decades of municipal background, I fully appreciate what you're going through on that. And I understand, Peter, the amount of work that you've put into this project too as well going through it. I have sent in a letter with a PowerPoint attachment to Karen for your review. You should have it. It's a four-page letter and there are twelve slides in PowerPoint. I could run through that or I could run through just the high points on the letter. Karen shaking her head. I understand. I'll just run through the points. Hi, Karen. Sorry.
I think it's important for all of you to know that we have upwards of forty letters and we have read them all.
So, basically, thank you. Basically, it goes something like this. The traffic pattern of the facility has all of the trucks entering and exiting on the east side of the building up against the residential abutters. And if I do a twenty-five-foot setback, which is on the plans, and I do a retaining wall, which is on the plans, and then I take a look at a forty-foot trailer, which is parked there, that tells me that all of those three to four hundred-plus trucks that are going in and out of that facility are going to be driving effectively within sixty-five feet of a residential lot. So when Holliston takes a look at their noise and their soot and all of the appropriate environmental issues associated with diesel emissions, they're going to have an issue at sixty-five-foot distance. It's not the distance to the house. It's the distance to the lot line of the residence that's in the zoning code right now. So you've asked for a noise study. The noise study should be at the lot line. You should be asking for a particulate PM two point five emission study to go along with it and assess the diesel emissions because soot in your zoning code is PM two point five. PM two point five, because of activities that I do with DEP and DOE R in Boston, PM two point five is identified as an increased risk of COVID right now because COVID attacks respiratory situations associated with the environmental justice community. So, as Mr. Rodenhyzer said earlier, I fully agree, and I've already communicated to Milford as well, Milford is identified as an environmental justice community. Where all the trucks will be turning to go north and south is an environmental justice community. Massachusetts right now is drafting incentives and regulations so that medium and heavy-duty truck operators will actually be asked to drive down PM two point five, go to alternate type of transfer-powered equipment so that they can lessen the impact on the environmental justice community as part of the COVID remediation program. So here we've got this major facility going up, generating diesel emissions, which include PM two point five, which are in the zoning codes as part of the lot line, measurable at the lot line. And all those trucks are entering and exiting on the residential side of the building. If it were me, and if I were thinking about emissions, I would put that entrance and exit on the other side of the building, irrespective of the grade changes that would probably have to do there because it would move those emissions almost seven to eight hundred feet away from where that residential lot line is. Now, within the PowerPoint, I've included ISO plus. There are the ISO plus for the west Medway power plant, a couple of miles south of there. And they are generated by DEP. And so those ISO plas show the direction of the wind and they prove out the fact that those diesel emissions are going to go up and over certain things and they're going to go right into those residences there. California is working on a fifteen-hundred-foot setback for distribution centers because of PM two point five diesel emissions. And so I went out and I measured on Google Earth what fifteen-hundred foot was from the lot line. And there are well over ninety-three residences that are in the drop zone of those PM two point five emissions. So as you do a noise study, maybe you want to ask for an emission study as well. Another point, it's a twenty-four seven facility and you're going to run yard dogs in the PowerPoints of picture of a yard dog. It's that little stubby thing that moves all the trailers around on a, on a site. Those yard dogs are usually diesel. They're now being transitioned to battery electric to go ZEV, zero emission, and to be quieter. And it may be that you want to attach a condition on the site that says they have to use low emission, zero noise yard dog equipment on it. Now, those yard dogs have backup alarms and flashing lights. You've got flashing lights in your regs. And if you look at the grade change that you have, you've got one end of the property that's probably twenty feet above the backyard lot line of some of those residences. And in other areas, it's darn close to being equal. So you're going to be projecting light and backup alarm noise over the tops of trees that people are going to be looking at for noise barriers and things like that. So as you do your noise study, will you also be doing, I would ask that you consider doing, inclusion of the yard dogs, inclusion of the backup alarms, inclusion of what those lights would be as part of the study because that's all part of it. And as you talk about a special permit, I did read the drawings. I did see the oil-water separators in the wastewater management system. But if you go to a Lowe's, and I have traveled around the United States, and I have been to Lowe's and Staples and US Postal Services and other distribution centers, Cisco Foods, Stop &amp; Shop, you name it, and I have been inside them and outside them. And if you're going to put a Lowe's or a Home Depot, they're probably going to want to have refueling for their trucks on site. So that's a different location that hasn't been shown on the drawings. And there's no way to check to see that your diesel-oil-water separators that are over by the waste, by the retention basin are adequate for a potential refueling site on there. So a condition that you may want to consider is, hey, since you didn't put it on the drawing, you shouldn't be allowed to have a refueling location on that site property on it. So it's just another thing to go, to go at it. There's a snow scraper. There's a snow that to keep the snow off the top of the trailers. You know, if you go down four ninety-five or any other highway and you see these big sheets of ice come off the top of the trailers that breaks windshield in the winter months, it's because they haven't been through a snow scraper. Where is that shown on the drawing? Because that takes away usable storage space. Where is the appropriate snow storage location that's going to be on the site? That should be delineated on the site as a condition because that has runoff ramifications. Those runoff ramifications can impact the retention basin and where you do it. So is there going to be a snow scraper to scrape the snow off the top of the trailers? Where will it be? It'll be on the residential side or some other side. Where will the snow storage be? Because that will have a ramification on the, how you handle the runoff for that to go along with it. So another one could be, hey, you're not going to have a standby generator? Where are you going to put that? What are the conditions of the noise of the standby generator for that site? Are you going to put it on the residential side of the property? I scoured the drawings. I couldn't find it. I didn't see it located on a roof. I didn't see it around any of the sides of the building. But that's something that would take space away and noise. And I know that there are things that have come before permanent, other application projects where it's, okay, it's on the roof. So do we put some kind of protective barrier around it so it's less oppressive as people look at the building to see where it is? And what's the maintenance cycle? How often will it be started? Things along those lines. So it's not just the traffic study at Route sixteen. It's how the traffic moves around the site and what other things are competing for the space on the site or might come later as an add extra. Those yard dogs have to be fueled somewhere. And there will be a number of them for the, for the amount of trailers there. There's probably going to be ten or twelve, at least that. And they're going to need to get fuel. Where are you going to, where is the client going to fuel those? Will he go down to the end of Route sixteen? End of, rather, Hopping Brook, turn right and go over to, I'm sorry, it's still the Sunoco Station to me. But will they go to the Sunoco Station and get their fuel for that site? Now they're turning right on Route sixteen, which we just heard earlier wasn't going to happen. All the truck traffic is going to turn left. So where is the yard dog going to get its fuel and is the diesel-oil-water separator set up for it? And what's the fire condition for that? And how would you then condition the site? So if it were me, I'd go back and say, you've got a symmetrical building there. Move number one. Take all the entrance and exit traffic of the trucks and put it on the west side of the building. Because right now that building is a thousand two hundred and eighty feet long and the sides of the building are six hundred and something. That's a half a mile. So you're exposing ninety-three homes downwind to PM two point five emissions as that site is laid out. And those emissions are soot. I don't know how that site could meet the existing zoning regulations. Anyway, I want to thank Anyway, I want to thank the planning board for my comments. You've got a copy of a PowerPoint that includes all of that. I've provided pictures of what yard dogs are, snow scrapers are and all of that. So you could look at it and define it. I've got the ISO plus in there. Those are DEP, not mine. You know, they're state sites and they were used just a couple of years ago for the permitting of the power plant down there. And then I've got all of these in here with recommendations that echo exactly what I've just said for what you might consider to be additional conditions on the site. No refueling. It's not on the plans. And there's no information on the oil-water separators to say that they're going to cover a spill that something might come out of. So thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
And Mr. Meyer, your letter is incredibly thorough.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. We've got about 35 minutes till we hit the end. The next person I see here is Mary Ellen.
Hi, this is actually Walter Branson, Mary Ellen's husband. Can you hear me?
Yes, and your street address. Thank you.
My own property at 263 South Street in Holliston. And I just really wanted to just make sure I understood correctly. I guess I would ask Mr. Bemis or the board that the project has committed that there will be no truck traffic from the facility down South Street and that that would be a binding commitment, which I assume would be a provision in the lease of the tenant that they cannot run their trucks down South Street. Is that correct? Mr. Bemis?
Yes, through the chair, yes, that's indeed what CRG committed.
Okay, and then, and I know other people have commented. Would it be fair also to say that that could not be binding on third parties who bring their trucks into this facility?
Peter?
Again, to the extent that I believe my tenant to be truthful, they're saying that they can make that a binding commitment in their lease. So I would think that will apply to third parties as well. I don't see how it's not, but I, you know, folks can say what they want to say here. Being forthcoming and we've had this discussion, so that much I can tell you.
Okay, I just can't, I guess I'm not understanding how a third-party trucker supplying whoever is in this facility would be bound by something in the lease to the tenant for this facility, but be that as it may. If the tenant violates this provision and does run trucks down South Street, what would CRG do about it?
Peter?
Sorry, I'm muting, so there's no background. So I would say that they would have some enforcement mechanisms. Sir, I don't think I personally explored this. I'm just taking the commitment and we've made a stand with it. We don't want traffic to go down the street that you currently reside on. And I don't disagree with your assessment of using it that way. You know, I see a lot of businesses in this park using that roadway because I travel up and down it when I leave Medway where I have a number of projects to get to this site. So yes, it becomes a road that I travel and I do see trucks on it. You probably know who they are. I would say that you could go and talk to those businesses, ask them why they use it. We've made a commitment not to use it.
Well, of course, obviously it's a good way to get to 495. I guess, I guess I would find it a little difficult to believe that CRG is going to call a default under their lease if it turns out trucks are going down South Street, so. But thank you.
I'm taking notes, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Gail.
Hello, it's actually Nick Marv, her husband.
Oh, hi Nick, how are you?
Good thanks. 123 South Street. I can't really add a whole lot. Some great comments about the tractor-trailers and the traffic. But one thing I just haven't heard about from anybody is the potential for drone traffic and flights originating and from a warehouse and coming and going. And has there been any talk about drones?
Funny that you mention that. Very funny that you mention that. Peter, would you like to comment?
I honestly have not had any discussion with anyone about drones. I know that there are some companies out there that have talked of using them. That's not been a topic that we've discussed at all. So I will ask the question.
Okay, just to add, is there any way we can maybe make a bylaw in our town to stop future? So that it couldn't happen? That's more for the planning board, I suppose.
By the airspace. Sure, I mean, if we're controlling the use, if there's an impact theoretically, probably want to know more if they're doing it first.
Right, well, I think that kind of maybe sets the table for, we're trying to figure out, you know, what the heck's going in over here? And if you tell people, well, you know, we're not going to allow you to use drones, some people may not want to commit to that. Just throwing it out, but anyway, thank you for hearing what I had to say.
Great, thank you very much. Next, I see Amy.
Hello, this is Thomas Fitzgerald, Amy's husband. We're residents of 61 Rockland Street in Holliston. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak. A few times again, you know, echoing a lot of the comments that have already been made, but a lot of the comments tonight have been, you know, traffic's going to be everything flowing to the west, to the west, to the west. We are residents of Holliston. Our road is west of Hopping Brook. Specifically in between Route 16 and South Street. So as of today, our road is used by residents and others, you know, as a cut-through. I also read the same article that Matthew saw around over 7,000 trips estimated per day. And even if there is some sort of control or regulation for the traffic of whoever leases this building to not use South Street or any cut-throughs, what is it going to do to all the other users of Route 16 going onto Rockland Street, onto South Street? Even with just the Amazon parking lot that exists in Milford right by 495 over the past year or so, we've only been living here for a year ourselves. That's caused significant traffic by the intersections getting over towards the Stop &amp; Shop and the other shopping plazas. I agree with the size of this, you know, this, we're a small town. This is really not a small-town issue. This is, really expands Milford, Medway, all the surrounding towns that, you know, serious reservations around having something of this scale. You know, it's, we keep being told that it's not Amazon today, but what's going to prevent, you know, Amazon or someone like them in the future? I feel like there's just very many open questions and I appreciate, you know, all those with extensive knowledge around building and regulations bringing those up this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see next we have Faramelli. I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing that incorrectly.
It's Paul Faramelli, AD Kim.
Thank you very much.
Yep, I'm late to this game. I found out about this whole thing after reading in the little Holliston paper about the first meeting. And my first question is, how did this even get this far? Because this is not Holliston. This is bad for Holliston. The, would, any tax revenue gains that they get will not offset the damages to this town. There was a reason that they set a limit for which sizes businesses should be in that thing. So I'm just sitting here scratching my head. We all know that we're going to see people taking right turns out of Hopping Brook. That's a given because how are you going to tell which trucks are going? And you're a guy who just left that facility and you see the guy in front of you take a right because he came from some other place. You're going to take the right too because you figure you can get away with it. So it's unrealistic to think you could ever regulate it. You know, it's just not going to happen. Then I think about the solar farm, I think it's on Chestnut, where they agreed not to cut down the trees. And son of a bee, the trees were gone and they were like, oops, they paid a fine, but they got away with it. You should have yanked their stuff out of there. I just see this, you're not going to be able to get the genie back in the bottle. This is just really bad news. And just as a little side note, that street when you take a left to go to 495 and 16, it's Beaver Street. So that's pretty much it. I just think it's really bad and I say no. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Next, we have Kevin.
Sure, thanks. My name's Kevin O'Connor. I'm at 15 Stable Way in Medway. I've written the town a couple of letters about some sort of basic zoning issues associated with the project that I think were overlooked right from the start. Mostly regarding the the intensity of use permitted at the project under the Holliston zoning laws. So, I mean, the way I, the way I read the zoning bylaw is that there's a 40% maximum site coverage requirement that's permitted. And if you look at what's being proposed here, there's structure being proposed on 55 to 60% of a really massive site. And, you know, I've sort of laid that out in a couple of letters that I provided to the, to the town. I've really had no subs response from anybody on that. And I'd like to hear from the planning board as to what their views are as to why the original site plan proposed by the applicant complies with the zoning bylaw in that regard?
I don't know, I don't know the bylaw question, so. Oh, yeah, although it's structures versus parking lots. So, yeah, that issue was addressed between my office and the building commissioner. There was a letter from council for somebody.
Yeah, that was a letter from me.
And there was a discussion as to whether or not the parking lot could constitute a structure, I believe, in kind of looking at it in basic terms. We couldn't reach that same conclusion, not that we tried to reach that conclusion, but it didn't support that conclusion. So it was an inquiry more than anything else, so we did take a look at that.
Was there anything else?
Well, yeah, can we have an answer to my question? Why doesn't the, the outside storage areas for loading docks, tractor-trailers and associated paved areas, why don't they qualify as structures within the Holliston zoning bylaw? I mean, the definition of structure within the bylaw is a three-dimensional permanent improvement to real estate made with building materials. It seems, it seems an obvious conclusion that those structures or those features of the project all qualify as structures. That should be counted.
I don't want to have derailed a conversation with a semantic legal argument. We didn't agree with his interpretation.
Okay, okay. All right, so at this point, I don't know if you have any further questions?
Can you say why?
Our lawyer said that he didn't think that that was the correct way to go about it.
So the board has nothing other than, no response other than their lawyer disagreed with, with what I just described?
What you just described is a reading from our bylaw and our lawyer read that and he decided that that is not an appropriate way to apply it and we're going to go with him.
No, no, just wait, just like, just give me one second here. Your bylaw says that a structure is defined as any three-dimensional three-dimensional structure that's, any three-dimensional permanent improvement to real estate made with building materials. I would like to hear from the board as to why the loading dock areas, the truck storage areas and the other paved areas of the site don't fall within that definition?
Because they don't. We don't interpret that. We don't view parking areas. If we regulated parking areas as structures, the entire zoning bylaw would fall apart. But I also don't want to devote any more time to this proceeding. It seems like there's a lot of people in queue. This is a side question. We've already been asked and we've already answered it. The board isn't required to accept my advice nor is the building commissioner, but I was asked and I do not feel that the definition of structure includes the paved areas.
For what reason?
For the reason I just said. It doesn't, I'm looking at the plain and obvious and common use of the words in the definition of structure. And I, so you could either talk over me?
I don't mean to, I'm sorry.
Okay, so my interpretation is what it is, the most common definition of structure, town after town after town does not include paved areas, period.
Yeah, but Holliston has its own.
And I'm not going to get in an argument here during the board's valuable time with you on it. If and when you, if you feel a different interpretation is warranted, then you have certain rights of appeal and enforcement after the fact.
Well, you know, I've written you guys twice about this and gotten no response from anybody.
Well, the reason for that is.
You've got your own town definition. You've got your own town definition.
At this point, we're going to move on from this, okay? And we're going to move on. If you have another question, we'd like to move on from this specific topic. So if you have, if you have another question at this point. Oh, you must be muted. I'm sorry, we can't hear you here.
So my only question is the same one I just asked that you haven't answered. So if you want to move on, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have limited amount of time here. Next would be Steve.
Hi, Steve McElhany, 12 Carriage House Way in Medway. So a direct butter. First off, I'd like to thank the board for, you know, allowing us to speak in this forum. All the speakers tonight, you can clearly see the passion that this, the town of Holliston and the town of Medway have in opposition to this project. I mean, I don't think you get 90-plus people on a call of this nature. And I think of outside of Mr. Bemis and his group and, you know, obviously all the residents on here clearly and resoundingly saying they don't want this project to be built. Couple of things, you know, one of the things I think it says in kind of the special permit granting is that there's no significant adverse effects to the neighborhood or the town. I think from hearing from people tonight, I think we're hearing that we all feel that there's significant adverse effects to the neighborhood of the town based on sound, traffic, light, vibrations, odor, pollution. I mean, I think there's a long list of things that we feel are significant adverse effects, especially to the neighborhood of budding and, you know, what Charlie Meyer said, you know, from a pollution standpoint, 93 homes within 1,500 feet of this proposed facility that could be adversely affected by pollution. Another thing is, and I completely support Janet Sheehan on this and I respect all the work she went through in terms of finding out about IT codes and saying IT code 150 doesn't feel like this building. And I tried to say that not as eloquently as she did a couple of weeks ago. Number one, because I didn't look up all the IT codes as she did. But this to me looks like a high cube cross-dock warehouse, which clearly falls outside of an IT 150. And I know we asked for assumptions last time that we met on the building and Mr. Milonowski wasn't in the mood to give us what the assumptions were that they provided to the traffic advisory group. So without the assumptions, it's hard to say what kind of building this is going to be. And I think the board made a great point in saying, you know, they would have to look at the highest and most at the highest and most intense use if you can't give us the assumptions or provide who the end user is going to be. So I think that, you know, without that, it's hard to say that it's going to be a 150 when it feels like everything else is a different ITE code than that. The one thing I wanted to bring up, not one thing, but one of the last things I want to bring up is, you know, once this is built, how are we going to do anything to police it? I mean, I think folks have said this, what are we going to call if there's too much noise? We're going to call if there's too much light? We're going to call if there's too much traffic? All these things are out there. Once it's built, it's built. It's very hard for something to happen after this is built. So I think, and I applaud the board for asking for all these things in advance, because once it's built, it's built. And even then, who's to say, you know, they're going to abide by the rules? I mean, there was rules in regards to timber cutting and those rules were clearly blatantly just disregarded and they went out and cleared the land. And they cleared it right in our lot lines. And, you know, they could have started anywhere, and I mentioned this before, but they chose to start in the lot lines to, I feel to make a point, saying, you know what, we're going to end up in your backyard and, you know, I'm going to give you the view early. So, you know, very disappointed in that. And I just want to, again, I want to invite the board, please come up to my house, 12 Carriage House Way, kind of see what trees are left. There's not a lot of them. And see what the clear cutting looks like from our neighborhood. Thank you again. That's all I have.
Thank you very much.
David, could I just jump in quick? So it seems like we only have about 15 minutes left tonight and we've heard from a lot of people who have made some great points. Everybody's sort of been on one side of the argument. I just think, in the interest of fairness, could we listen to some people who are potentially in favor of the project? Maybe if we could give them a chance to speak?
I see two more people that have raised their hand here. I don't know whether they're for or against it.
Yeah, I don't know. Maybe if somebody's in favor of it, could they? You know, I just want to make sure everybody has a chance to have their voice heard.
Yeah. Okay, we've got about 15 minutes. And in that amount of time, we need to wrap up. So we'll have to have a quick discussion. But at this point, I've got two more people. It looks like, again, I forgot to bring my glasses here. Paul is Gabriel.
Yeah, this is, yeah, this is Steve Froya. We're on 30 Stable Way, Direct Butters, also Holliston Taxpayers. That's our properties in both towns. May I just ask who the board member to the left of the table is?
Probably me. I'm the only other board member here.
I gotta say, I'm sorry?
To the left, your left or our left?
To my left, underneath the American flag.
It'll be me.
Josh, why?
Josh, with all due respect, I mean, this is a project that is directly in 93 of our backyard with three little children, children affecting our health and our quality of life. And I gotta say, you've got to be one of the most unprofessional board members I've ever seen, texting on your phone, slouching in each ear, throwing your arms up.
Texting.
This is, listen, please, let me speak. Yeah, I've been watching this hour and honestly, this is devastating to us and our families and our neighbors. And for me to sit here and watch you not take this seriously whatsoever, it's completely unprofessional. And somebody should talk to you about that because if we watch you again, it's completely unprofessional. That's the first thing I want to say. Second thing I want to say, and nobody has brought up, we all know that they're going to turn right out of this parking lot. The next right turn to go back to the highway is Summer Street. Summer Street, as most of you know, is where the Medway High School is, right? So we're going to have potentially thousands of tractor trailer trucks driving past the Medway High School. Not only is it a safety concern for the Medway High School and the children, which we have three small ones, right, and school buses, it's also going to cause all sorts of delays for schools as well, right? And nobody has, nobody has once brought that up either. So I just want to make sure that that's known. We're obviously not in favor of this project. I don't think many people are. I just wanted to make that known and I wish that some, you know, the one particular person there would take this a little bit more serious because it is a devastating thing for us.
Okay. I would like to respond, sir. I've served on this board for five years. I've never not taken any meeting seriously. I'm not texting. I'm looking up what land uses improvements and structural improvements are because I wanted to give an accurate answer to the gentleman who spoke before because I felt like he deserved it. I'm sorry that you feel that I'm being disrespectful by looking at my phone, but I'm trying to look up an adequate answer to that gentleman's thing.
I suggest you watch the video.
My next point to you, sir, would be, is that my slouching would probably, you know, it doesn't look very professional. I might agree with that. However, I am paying 100% attention to everything you're saying. You just brought up the fact that people are going to be turning right. That has happened, that's been brought up at least a dozen times tonight, sir.
The high school wasn't brought up one time. I don't know why you're arguing. Why are you arguing with me? Why are you arguing with me? This is so unprofessional. You guys should be embarrassed.
Okay.
I get the board yelling at me because I'm raising up the safety of the high school students in Midway.
Yeah, no.
No, because you're insulting my personal, you're insulting me personally.
Watch the video and you can see what we see.
At this point, we just have a couple more minutes. I just want to move, just if we have two more callers here, I'd like to, thanks so much. Next is, it looks like Brooks, seven?
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, I'm a Holliston resident. I live at 43 Peter Street. I've been a resident for 21 years here. And, I mean, everybody's making really valid points and I don't know anybody, any Holliston residents that are happy with this situation. And I'm glad to see that on this meeting that they're actually Holliston people talking because I was on the last meeting and we only heard from the Medway Butters. And boy, I really, really feel for you people because, I mean, I can't imagine being a butter to this, what's going on. I mean, I'm looking at this article that was in the Holliston paper that this timeline, March 11th is when the site plan was approved. In the beginning of this pandemic, I mean, are you kidding me? I mean, then, and that the Butters were only, they were known about this three months after the fact? I mean, I'm thinking about the property values of those people in Medway that are Butters. How about the property values for the people of Holliston, Massachusetts? I mean, you're taking the character away from our town. I'm just, I'm so upset. I can't even, I can't even, that's all I have to say. That's all I have to say. Very upset.
Thank you very much. We have two more callers. This is EDMCI. I'm sorry, again, I forgot to bring my glasses here.
Okay, now you can hear me, right?
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, okay. My name is Ed McCollum. I'm a Holliston resident, that 5 Washington Path, so east of the site. And, you know, my question really, I guess, is concerning the traffic. And I'm looking, trying to understand more about the traffic studies there. And, you know, my conclusion is that the numbers really have a very wide range in terms of the possibilities, you know, with the 30% going east, 70% going west, as well as the point that the number of vehicle trips per day, it's counting vehicles, but these are large semi-trucks. And so I assume the traffic engineers really count a vehicle as a vehicle, but to the people looking at it, that truck is a lot bigger than, you know, than some other small vehicles. I'm not sure how much bearing that would have on decisions. But 600 trucks going by a road like this is, you know, that's a truck every six seconds. That's a lot of trucks. Have the potential to go by, especially with, you know, the loud noise, brake braking and stuff as people have mentioned. So I guess my, sum up, my question really is, how much traffic is too much? In particular, you know, with the studies, I really don't have a lot of faith in the numbers. Looking back at some of the other ones, between the original studies and then amended studies, the number are off by 25% or so. You add on 3X for this 30%, 70% stuff, it's hard to believe any of the numbers. It seems as though we may be looking at an awful lot of large trucks and that's my concern. Thanks for listening.
Thank you very much. One more person here, Joyce?
Hi, this is Joyce Bogedian. I live on 220 Cortlandt Street. We are directly across from South Street for Route 16. And that's our only access to get out of the street without having to go all the way down to the other side of Marshalls out to Prentice. So how are we going to get out of our streets, whether we want to go right or left, with all this, these trucks coming by every few seconds? And what are they going to do about it? Are they going to put a traffic light at that intersection?
I believe that. I believe that is proposed by the applicant.
I've heard about it.
No, not at your intersection, at the intersection at Hoppingbrook.
Yes, I heard about that, but how do you get out of Cortlandt Street when you have all these trucks going by and especially if you have to make a right-hand turn to go towards downtown Holliston? What plan is in place for the residents who live west of Hoppingbrook and need to get out of their streets?
Right, and that's one of the concerns I had earlier tonight, that I mentioned, some of those side streets. That that needs to be included. We need to look into that. Or that they need to look into that in terms of traffic setting, all those side streets. That's a concern. So was there any other questions besides that?
No, I'm just concerned about how we're going to be able to get in and out of these streets and like everybody else, pollution, noise, everything going on. It's just not a great idea. That's all I have for now.
Thank you very much. I think there's one more caller here, which is Zoe. We've got about six minutes till we have to end.
So this is John Player from 19 Francine Drive in Holliston. One of the topics that has been touched on briefly, but not to the level that I'd like to have it discussed, obviously not much time left at this point, but thinking about the wastewater with that amount of pavement. And of course, there are these ponds, retaining ponds that should have a water oil separator. I'm wondering about, is there a possibility of having wastewater or wetlands assessment being done on this site? Again, thinking about the number of vehicles, the amount of oil, gas, whatever that may land on that pavement and how much may end up in the surface water that goes to the surrounding wetlands. So I'm not sure if that's something that is necessary. I guess there is enough standoff between this location and the wetlands, but I don't understand that the regulation is well enough to know if there's any way to still include a wastewater or a surface water assessment for the potential of having the various contaminants get to the wetlands. And of course, there's a whole host of endangered species that are, that are in these wetlands around us. And that's all I had.
Okay. I think we have a couple of minutes to wrap up. I know there was a question from, in regards to why we had to wrap up at 9:30 from Kevin Dickey, I believe. I have something here that says that you were asking why we were wrapping up at 9:30. And pretty much, I guess, in regards to the governor has issued it and there's, actually there's six of us in this room. I know you're at home, but we have to end this and be back to where we...
Yeah, but, yeah, okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
So Kevin Dickey, six old, sorry, Ray. Yeah, but go out and just look on the website and read the 15 bullet points on who's supposed to abide by that.
Mr. Chairman, it's a parameter. It's been two hours. I think it's a fair parameter. It's a...
That's all right, though. No, that's all...
Does local meetings constitute a gathering under the governor's order, clearly? The only thing that would be exempted would be a legislative session of a...
No, you...
But you set the parameter early. It's not the last time that the public will have to talk either. Obviously, it's next session, there'll be ample opportunity.
There must be council, right, as you, right, is it?
Yes, sir.
Is it?
Yes.
Yeah. No, who just spoke up, right? So, yeah, and I knew that would happen and I'm not even a lawyer, that you would bring that up. But if everybody's paying attention, you'd know the answer to my question. Very simple. We're all human. We make mistakes, right? But I'm sorry, I knew this was going to happen. You were going to shut it down.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. There definitely will be another opportunity for you to speak, for people to speak. So I think at this point, I'm trying to, at this point, just...
Probably, there's obviously work for the applicant to do. There's a lot of information out there and they can coordinate. I don't think we'll even get to peer review by the time you meet again, but if they do, I suppose between yourself and Karen, you could start exploring peer review, but my guess is we'll be starting to just round out some of those issues at the next session in December.
Okay. Okay. So we have in terms of time, I'm trying to think what we have in terms of time for...
We have this item scheduled already for the 18th with regard to the tree there.
Okay. September 18th.
17th.
The 17th.
17th, okay. All right. Or suggest...
I thought we were trying to do separate things in the evening so we don't get confused. Thought we were trying to keep those two items separate from, no?
Okay. I'm going to have to go into January. So do we want to go into January, I guess? January 7th. Is this the 7th or the 14th of January? I like the 7th. You like the 7th? I like the 7th. Does that work?
That's fine with me.
I'm good with it.
All right, Scott?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we're looking to continue this hearing would be until the 7th of January. Okay. Okay. So at this point, I'd like to, if somebody would like to make a motion to continue this hearing to the 7th of January?
I will make a motion to continue this hearing to the 7th of January.
Okay, do I have a second?
2021.
Oh, yes, 2021.
Second.
Okay. Okay, Karen, a second there. All in favor? I guess starting with Karen?
Aye.
Okay, Scott?
Aye.
All right. And Jason?
Aye.
All right, Josh?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, thank you and thank you everybody for all your, for listening and everybody's comments. We certainly appreciate it. And please be safe out there. Thank you very much.
So should we motion to adjourn the meeting?
Yep, we, would somebody like to make a motion?
A motion to adjourn the meeting.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Karen, a second there. All in favor? Karen?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Jason?
You go.
Jason? Okay.
You have a quorum voting on your...
Okay, okay, thank you very much.